Good evening. Please join me for the playing of O Canada. Thank you. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the lands of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the WainDOT and the Anishobi nations, including ancestors of Chipewa, the Thames First Nations. It is also the traditional territory of the Hurandisun at Wandered, at a Wanderdok and Mississauga First Nations. These First Nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and water in the municipality of Central Elgin. Does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, move on to delegations. I believe there's none for tonight. And adoption of the previous minutes. Mover and a seconder? Counselor Helbin, Counselor Connors?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helbin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that the minutes for the regular meeting of council dated Monday, November thirteenth, 2023, and special meeting of council dated Monday, November twentieth, 2023 be adopted.
Call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan? That's ca- Mayor Sloan?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. That's carried.
Correspondents? Requiring action? We have a letter from Carolyn Frieden, Chair of the Board of Directors, St. Thomas Cemetery Company, requesting council's consideration for the establishment of an operating grant to ensure the continued maintenance of the cemetery grounds. And, um, mover and a seconder to adopt that? Or to accept that? Information? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Is this for information or are we putting it through to the Budget Committee? I'm not quite sure I understand.
Ms. Greenall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and yes, um, Mayor, I would maybe make a recommendation for council to consider moving this to your budget discussions as it will actually have a financial ask attached to it.
Counselor Helbin and Counselor Watson, moving or asking a question?
I was gonna, through you Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this to budgetary talks, to our budget talks going forward.
Is there a seconder?
I'll second.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Helbin, that the request from the St. Thomas Cemetery Company be forwarded for consideration by the Budget Committee.
We'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
Moving on to receive for information, we have a Elgin County letter, Elgin County Council highlights, letter from Grant Jones, Elgin Group Police Services Board Minutes and Heritage Central Elgin Minutes. Can I get a mover and seconder that we accept that for information? Counselor Helbin, Counselor Watson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helbin, seconded by Counselor Watson, that correspondence items number one to four be received for information and filed.
We'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes, no discussion.
That's carried. Thank you.
And report Central Elgin Planning Office, Consent Application, CEP fifty-two, twenty-three. Are we receiving this or Kevin, are you speaking to this?
Yes, I can provide some, I guess, clarification on all of these applications if required. Ultimately for this first report, it's to rectify inadvertent merger of lots through the purchase of these two properties. They were inadvertently merged. And these individuals are looking to re-sever the properties based on their original lot lines.
Thank you. Any questions? Need a mover and a seconder for this? Counselor Helbin, Counselor Watson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helbin, seconded by that report CEP fifty-two, twenty-three be received for information, and that should council pass a resolution in support of consent application E eighty, twenty-three to the Land Division Committee. Staff recommends the following conditions. The municipality of Central Elgin be provided with a copy of the reference plan.
Well, call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
Can I raise a point of order?
Sure.
Okay, so we have six more of these. Is there any way we can group them together, things we don't have? We have to call every vote just in the consideration of time, please. Could I ask the deputy clerk or the clerk to weigh in on that?
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to council, if council is in agreement to a motion to take the Central Elgin planning reports collectively, that can certainly be moved and considered by council.
Ms. Greenall?
Just if I might counsel them, maybe take an opportunity to make sure you're reading which each report is requesting a requirement in doing so.
Does anybody have a question or comment to that or question in any one of these specifically? Counselor Connors?
Through you Deputy Mayor, I haven't been able to open number seven. I can open all the other ones, but I can't seem to get into seven.
Neither can I.
Excuse me Deputy Mayor, would you prefer a motion for them to receive them all at once? Okay. So council, if it is you're choosing to pass a motion for all planning applications at once, we will need a a motion for you to do so. Otherwise, the deputy clerk would proceed to walk through each report individually.
Do we have somebody to make a motion in that respect? Mayor Sloan? Counselor Helbin, we'll second? Ms. Greenall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, just prior to that vote, Mr. McClure, is there anything that council should be aware of in these reports for concern? If you were to speak to them individually, is there anything in the reports of concern that they should be drawing their attention to?
Uh, thank you. Ultimately, it is one of the comments that I did here was four and five. They are different consent applications. Just to note, the one facilitates the next in store, and so ultimately, uh, I guess item four splits a portion of a property in two essentially, or sorry, three by taking a parcel out of the middle. And then the the fifth application is then going to sub further subdivide that southern portion, the southern property. So on the report itself, you'll notice that it shows A, B, C, and D as parcels. The first application is essentially creating parcel B. And then the, uh, uh, five is creating the C and D. So just as as point of clarification. Uh, but other than that, staff didn't have any concerns.
Thank you Kevin.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Mayor Sloan, seconded by Counselor Helbin, that CEP fifty-three, twenty-three, fifty-four, twenty-three, fifty-five, twenty-three, fifty-six, twenty-three, fifty-seven, twenty-three, and sixty-one, twenty-three be taken collectively, and that council receive the reports for information, and further that council approve implementation of all staff recommendations outlined therein.
We'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
Moving on, Chief Administrative Officer, CAO twenty-three, twenty-three, Heritage Belmont mural.
Speak to this? Thank you Deputy Mayor, and I'm just trying to pull my report up, however, this one is quite simple. This was a this was a presentation or prevent or sorry, this was a submission at your last council meeting of which the Heritage Society for Belmont would like to propose with a mural. You gave direction for that to return to staff. Staff did to sort of seek a clarification that this would be seeking council's approval in principle so that they then can proceed to get drawings of what the mirror will look like. They can engage the artist, and of course, what we would add on to here is that those final renderings be provided to council for your final approval.
Thank you. Do we have a mover and seconder? Counselor Bachman? Counselor Helbin?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bogman, seconded by Counselor Helbin, that report CAO twenty-three, twenty-three be received for information, and the council the installation of a historical themed mural on the south facing wall of the Belmont Arena by Heritage Central Elgin, and further that the final design be reviewed and approved by council.
We'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried. Thank you.
Moving on to CAO twenty-four, twenty-three, issuance of building permits. Ms. Greenall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through you, council, at your October tenth, twenty-third meeting, you heard delegation from Mr. Kyle Kronk, and in that council had a direction that they, um, council received the request from Kyle Kronk to expedite a building permit to move his residence, and staff should be directed to return a point with a report with information on the request to a future meeting of council. This is that report. Um, our chief building officer has provided you with the process of which he is to go through for a building permit. That process is, um, that process requirements are listed under the Building Code Act and the Ontario Building Code. So it is legislation around the building permit process. You'll also notice that the timeframe of which he can proceed with, um, completing that building permit is much more dictated by the applicant getting their application in and completing all of the necessary work that is required for a building permit before he may proceed. The codes also further determine the amount of time for which he can respond. As far as expediating that process, um, the chief building officer has provided you with some reasons as to why, and he does try to work as quickly as he can, particularly in those situations when it is around septic tanks or someone has already had the lumber delivered for a a building of a deck in the backyard. Um, he does try to be expedient in those in those in those instances. And you'll note that the Building Code Act um, does provide the authority for the completion of a building permit to the chief building official. And council, there is no language within there that provides council with any sort of responsibilities or roles into that building permit. In other words, all of that responsibility is delegated to our chief building official. I can happy try to answer any questions you have, and sorry, Mr. Stadema had a family emergency today. Wouldn't be able to join us. We can take those questions if there are any from council, or we certainly can hear if you had any other recommendations from this report. Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Greenall? Can I have a mover and a seconder for this information? Counselor Helbin, Counselor Connors?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helbin, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report CAO twenty-four, twenty-three be received for information.
We'll call that vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried.
Okay, moving on to CAO twenty-three or twenty-six, twenty-three, three eighty-one Edith Cavell available for disposal.
Council, thank you. At your September eleventh meeting, uh, council gave direction for staff to proceed with the negotiation of sale of land, and that land being three eighty-one Edith Cavell. Before those negotiations can begin, we must follow our sale and other disposition of lands, uh, policy, which I have stepped stepped out the steps of what is required for land to be disposed of. So in this report, it notes that the CEO director shall identify the particular lands, and those lands are identified on the map provided to you. The CEO director shall circulate an email to all directors of municipality for comment about whether municipality should dispose of the lands. Those comments were provided for you in a table. We sought the, um, we added on to that, or I added on to that and sought information or questions from our planning, so Mr. McClure responded. I also sought information from their previous director of asset management, as he's the one who started this file and had sort of historical knowledge of any discussions or talks that may have already taken place. Um, I did receive, uh, I did receive comment from all directors, and those are provided for you. And finally, the director of CAO should make recommendation to council to dispose of the land with or without conditions, including but not limited to a minimum price. Uh, that minimum price was determined in the appraisal that was previously, uh, provided to council for your consideration. I missed one of the steps, which is also to seek an appraisal. Of course, that has already been done so. And then finally, council may declare the lands available for disposal by resolution, and that is our request of this report for council to make a recommendation or pass a recommendation that three eighty-one Edith Cavell be made available for disposal. At that steps, we will follow our sale and other disposition policy as to how we shall prepare the land for sale, which does require us to, uh, a two-week notice period of which we would make sure that the the lands were made publicly aware. And then after that period, we can proceed. This land only has really one purchaser, as it's an attachment to a pre-existing land. This land was originally declared as road widening. Um, and so we we know that there is a buyer, however, we must go through this process to make the public aware.
Thank you, Ms. Greenall. Does anybody have any questions? Mayor Sloan?
Could you just confirm, thank you through you Deputy Mayor to Ms. Greenall? There's no other potential, um, there's only one person that this whole process is being done through. First question is, is that the case? And number two, once the solicited price or whatever happens in the next two weeks, does that decision come back to council? Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Sloan, and through you Deputy Mayor. Uh, we have received an appraised value of those lands, and a direction of council would be to proceed with those appraised values. I was trying to get, the reason this was so delayed, I was trying to get clarification that these lands were designated as road widening. I could not get a, an answer or understanding, does road widening determine them to be a road? If it was a road, we would proceed in a different manner, which we would just go directly to uh, the owners that are adjacent to that land, to the roadway. However, this is a very small piece of land that was, um, that the municipality had asked for when it initially thought that they might be proceeding with road widening for Edith Cavell. And so it is really only attached to one designated property owner, but we still need to follow the process as described.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mover and a seconder for CAO twenty-six, twenty-three? Counselor Watson, Counselor Helbin?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Watson, seconded by Counselor Helbin, that report CAO twenty-six, twenty-three be received for information, and that council declare the land as identified at three eighty-one Edith Cavell available for disposal at a minimum price of thirty-one thousand dollars.
Call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
No.
That's carried.
Moving on to Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, ICS twenty thirty-five, twenty-three, Bach Borowski, Drainage Abandonment. Uh, who's speaking to this? Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, staff is requesting council direction to commence Drainage Act procedures to abandon the Bach-Borowski drain. Uh, the council report outlines a request for abandonment of the Bach-Borowski drain. This is a very small drain that is in disrepair and is no longer required for the watershed. If the abandonment goes through, it removes the municipality's obligation to maintain that drain.
Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, is there a mover and seconder? Counselor Helbin? Counselor Bachman?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helbin, seconded by Counselor Bogman, that report ICS thirty-five, twenty-three regarding Bach-Borowski abandonment be received for information, and that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin direct staff to commence Drainage Act procedures to abandon the Bach-Borowski drain.
We'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Helbin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes, sorry.
That's carried. Thank you.
ICS thirty-two, twenty-three, Ferris Drain Request for Minor Improvements. Mr. Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. A request for improvement has been received by the municipality for the Ferris municipal drain. Uh, staff recommend appointing Spreet and Associates to prepare a report under section seventy-eight of the Drainage Act.
Are there any questions regarding this? Counselor Watson?
Yeah, through you Chair, to Mr. Brooks, uh, where is this drain? It's not part of the Albertson at all, is it?
Mr. Brooks?
Uh, this drain is located immediately east of the Albertson drain.
Supplementary?
Yes, through Chair. Uh, these minor improvements, could they be done when all this works being done with the Albertson drain, or is it not that much, uh, cost associated with it? Like what, how much cost is going to, uh, it going to cost to fix the Ferris drain? Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to, uh, uh, Counselor Watson, there really won't be much efficiency in, uh, pairing the two together. The Albertson drain has already been, uh, well, will be considered by council, uh, through the, um, bylaw tonight. Um, this would be, uh, a separate drain with a separate, uh, drainage request, and we would follow accordingly.
Is there any other questions? Mayor Sloan?
Thank you, um, through you Mayor, or Deputy Mayor to Mr. Brooks. Is there a budget for this or a cost? I didn't see it on the on the page unless I was looking at the wrong place.
Uh, for the appointment of Spreet and Associates, there is no, uh, budget or cost included. That's typically the route that, uh, staff take with these municipal drains is it's hard to price these types of projects out because it really, the amount of time spent really depends on the amount of public engagement that the engineer will receive. Therefore, we found, uh, the best way to proceed is just on an hourly basis through the consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any further questions? Is there a mover and a seconder for this? Is there a mover and a seconder for this? Counselor Halpin, Counselor Bogman?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bogman, that council of the municipality of Central Elgin appoint Brandon Widner, P. Enge of Spree Associates Limited to prepare a report under section 78 of the Drainage Act for the Ferris drain.
Can we call the vote?
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
Bylaws, bylaw 2844, municipal drain, Albertson drain. This is a bylaw being read the first and second time, do I have a mover and seconder for this? Counselor Halpin? Counselor Bogman?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Halpin, seconded by Counselor Bogman, that bylaw 2844 be read a first and second time.
Call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
Can I get a mover and seconder to move into closed? Oh, sorry, Ms. Greenall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, moving into close, we do have an extra item to add to the agenda for closed session.
Okay.
Okay. And for item, we would have an extra item to add on to the agenda for that additional item. I'm asking council if they would consider moving Nick Loeb to be your clerk for that session. You need a motion?
Can I get a motion for that? Counselor Bogman, Counselor Halpin? Um, just looking at the agenda, I'm just wondering if we want to look at CS2 Fire Services, I don't believe that that needs to be enclosed. Oh, it does? Oh, okay. Sorry. All right.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Bogman, seconded by Counselor Halpin, that the director of legal services Nicholas Loeb be appointed deputy clerk for closed session item CS5.
We'll call the vote.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connor?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes. Glad we didn't, that's video.
That's carried, thank you.
Uh, can I get a mover and seconder to proceeding to closed, Counselor Connors, Counselor Watson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the motion reads, move by Counselor Connor, seconded by Counselor Watson, that council proceed into closed session at 7:35 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purchase purpose, and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Can we call the vote?
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Halpin?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Connors?
Yes.
Counselor Bogman?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Mayor Sloan?
Yes.
That's carried, thank you.
Does anybody want a five minute break in between starting up closed, or we're good to?